Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Ross. Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. Approval agenda? Unapproval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abolished? Martin, I guess, what do you think?
Okay. Progress is being made on the Parkswood project. Plans have been submitted to MODOT. Their responses were received. Comments were received. The engineers responded to the comments and they're currently looking at what should be the final version of that. We also received the right-of-way legal description for the property that will be needed to support the project. And I have a call-in to MODOT. They have to authorize our talking to the property owner in a formal conversation. The fact that we've had informal conversations is okay. Before we begin the right-of-way process, basically it's just going to require us agreeing on the appraisal approach. We hope that we can agree on a single appraiser that we both accept. But absent that, a typical way of doing it is for each to choose an appraiser and you take the average. But I think we'll probably be able to agree. Pam and I have been meeting with insurance companies. We have a meeting set up with Lake Nook next week on health insurance. What we discovered is that the provisions of the Affordable Care Act are going to have, and I say a positive influence, in that those provisions are going to cause us to have a much lower increase in health insurance for the same level of service than we would have if we weren't already part of the process. So hopefully, we're going to be able to see increases that are a single-digit in nature. Been interviewing applicants for the Community Development Administrator and have made an offer to a person to take that position. Her name is Petrie Powell. She has a lot of credentials and is willing to work for what we can pay her. Her story is that her husband's retired, they're moving to Lake Forest. She's in her mid-50s, not ready to sit at home. So she's just looking for productive work. And the pay is not as important to her as being productively engaged. So that's a good thing for the city. Verizon came in and met with us. Just for your information, they're taking over the old T-Mobile towers. And by the late summer, early fall, they expect to have service available everywhere in St. Genevieve. And from what they say, it will be pretty good coverage. So I know we have problems with AT&amp;T, kind of spotty coverage. Maybe this'll either motivate them to improve things in St. Genevieve or give people an opportunity to get better service elsewhere. Missouri Municipal League has endorsed and sponsored an organization known as Buy Board. And so we invited them in to give them presentation. And it's a purchasing cooperative. They've existed for a long time, usually with school districts. I was aware of them in Texas. And the only one in Missouri who was participating was Kansas City Regional Council of Governments. I asked CMO to look at it, and they were investigating it when the Municipal League came forward with this program. Joe Prince attended a MML education program a couple of weeks ago, I guess. Coincidentally, he met the people from Buy Board and picked up those brochures. So that will explain it to you. In essence, what it comes down to is, you know, we are obligated to competitively bid for purchases. Buy Board's program, it's only available to cities, counties, and schools and nonprofits, is to go ahead and do the bidding process. And so then the vendors have been pre-vetted for compliance with the state bidding procedures. And you don't have to take the time to advertise or the expense. You can just go straight to those vendors. It's kind of like we do when we buy off the state vehicle list. You know, it's already been competitively bid and those prices are available to you. As with... Buy Board doesn't require that you go through them. There was no cost to the city to subscribe. So we went ahead and joined. And if you have a vendor and you want to deal directly with the vendor, you just call a vendor and tell them you want the Buy Board price. Or you can ask Buy Board to seek for you. The range of things they have is fairly large, but it's expanding all the time. So it'll be a good resource for us. It saves some time and money. We attended the Mississippi Lime Citizen Advisory Panel Meeting. A couple of noteworthy things. The house they own at the corner of Market and 61, we've been talking to them about for quite some time now, asking them to pay more attention to it, is going to get some repair work and painting, and they're going to make it more presentable than it is now and hopefully stabilize it so it doesn't deteriorate. The other thing they told us that I think is noteworthy is they've been trying to get MODOT to cooperate with them in putting a turn lane in the area where we have backups in the morning and in the afternoons. And they haven't been getting much cooperation. But what they think that they now want to do is have a separate entrance further north of... North of the employee entrance, where there's the old entrance to the mine, and have that be in and the other one be out. And that'll keep those trucks from piling up on each other when they get there. Whatever they... Either of those or both of those would be a great step forward to improving the safety there at Highway 61 and Market. We sent the notices for the public nuisance that were discussed at the board meeting. I'd like to request a closed session afterward to talk about real estate, as it turns out. And so plan on hanging around for a little while after the regular meeting. And finally, I've been telling you about the problems with the Main Street Trail. The time lag and MODOT saying they wanted updated information and the engineer not really being how on his list of priorities. Both the mayor and I independently spoke to the engineer without knowing it. And he committed to both of us that he's now ready to put some time into that and to get that work out for us. You'll recall, they've already been paid, and he's apparently willing to do it without any future charges. Yes, sir?
Is that the same engineer from the market? Through sidewalks and all?
Yes.
Anything else?
And just for your information, we are not planning on retaining them for inspection services when the contract is left.
Okay. Steve?
At the end of the month of May, well number six went down. It had a short underground electric motor down on the ground. This is the well number six is the well we've put quite a bit of money in over the past few years. We've had a range of casing on it. We've replaced multiple motors. This again is another motor. For a drilling company to come in and replace it, it is around $8,000. For the money that we've put into it, it's... The well has ran its course. It's at the end of the fly span. So we'll be putting in, hopefully in the capital improvement part of the budget for next year to drill a new well. At this time, we're not going to repair well number six. We're putting another $8,000 to $10,000 in it. Sledge haulers did... Were able to be... To get back on the fields, remove all of our bio-salads from our wastewater plant. And all their equipment is gone. They are done.
Big tank empty?
The big tank has about 250,000 gallons left in it. We had 700,000 removed.
Is the idea to eventually empty that? I guess that was what was within the budget this year, but...
Yes. And adjustments have been made for the upcoming budget year to accommodate the more... Increased flows that we've seen.
And how much we... How much do we make a year?
We make about 120,000 gallons. Or 1.2 million gallons. Sorry.
So in future, we are going to try to get rid of that much every year?
Yes.
If you're able to keep up with it?
Yes.
I know we've been a little bit behind, but...
Yeah. We've had some increased flows over the winter and over the past year, which, you know, the previous budget didn't allow for... Didn't have that increase in it. Couldn't be foreseen, so...
I guess there's not a problem with well six being out of service?
No. We still have ample supply. We're only running right now 19 hours a day on three wells. And then shutting down maybe one to two hours through the day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I just had a couple of high points for you. We had an increase in our counts in May through the visitor's center. As you can see, we had 2,604 guests in the month of May. That was 19% higher than last year. And in our passports, which is the next graph that has adult passports and student passports on it, in the month of May, we sold 148 adult passports and 285 student passports. The adult count was pretty well on par with previous years, but our student count was quite a bit higher. 285 this year versus 93 in 2013. And as you can see on the bar chart for individual visitors through the Welcome Center, we had our strongest month so far this year in May. And based on what we've seen so far in the month of June, it's been a very strong June. We had an exceptionally strong amount of foot traffic on the French Festival weekend on June 14th. So we're thinking that June's going to be another good month. Some of our additional activities that have been implemented this year, in addition to the open-air market that's going on on Saturdays and Sundays downtown, we have a small program that we call Saturdays in St. Genevieve. We bring in people, either musicians or demonstrators, and also have volunteers walking around in colonial costume, just to have something to see and experience on the streets of St. Genevieve on a Saturday morning in particular. And I'm always looking for new volunteers. So if you're out there and watching this and you're interested in volunteering, get in touch. We were represented at two outreach programs during the past month. One was the Lafayette Square Home and Garden Tour in St. Louis, and the other was in Perryville, which was bikers on the square. Two very different events, but we were reaching out to people, trying to encourage them to come to St. Genevieve and to increase awareness of our destination. In addition, I have a couple of things listed there across the bottom, upcoming events to be aware of as Alderman and participate or encourage participation where you can. First of all, tomorrow night is the Fourth Friday Art Walk for the month of June. This is sponsored by the St. Genevieve Downtown Renewal Program. And so it's an opportunity, as you know, the art galleries stay open from 6:00 to 9:00 in the evening. Many of the shops support the activity by staying open late, and maybe they offer specials. The Welcome Center is doing a special program tomorrow night, courtesy of Bob Mueller, who has researched... We get a lot of questions about the mural that's in our St. Genevieve post office, the one that has the Lagioni on it. And during the '30s and '40s, there was a program across the U.S. to encourage public art and to have murals painted in post offices. So quite a few of the artists who participated in the Summer School of Art here in St. Genevieve in the 1930s were chosen to paint some of these murals. So Bob has done some research on that, and he's going to give a presentation tomorrow night at 6:00 at the Welcome Center. So if you're interested in learning more about post office murals, come and join us tomorrow evening. In addition, as you saw in the paper this week, the Welcome Center was the recipient of a donation of three new pieces of art. These were by Charles Reinhardt, two large paintings and a sketch. And coincidentally, at the same time as we received a donation of these three, we had another family with local ties loan us some Charles Reinhardt work. And so, I don't know, it just seems like serendipity to say that maybe at a future Fourth Friday Art Walk, maybe July, probably August. I have already started to get calls in the papers to the paper, including my request for people to loan us their Charles Reinhardts to put together a little exhibit about this St. Genevieve artist. And so we might have that either in July or August, depending on how long it takes to pull this together. But it's kind of neat because he's definitely one of our own, and although he doesn't live here anymore, his art is still very much held by St. Genevieve family. So we're going to try to put that together. And of course, we have the Fourth of July coming up, and there's going to be some new activities this year for the Fourth of July, which you'll read more about that in the paper. But in addition to the activities in the evening, there'll be some activities in the middle of the day of patriotic speech and some marching and so on. So... And then the Summer Music Festival, of course, is continuing on Friday nights. I believe this Friday night is Bob Cuban or the Bob Cuban Band, and I think it's sold out or almost sold out. And then I think the one after that is the Dueling Pianos. And if you haven't seen any of them yet, that would be a great one to start with because it's a lot of fun. And we have a date for the... Actually, this is Midnight Madness, but it's Moonlight Madness on July 17th. It's a night when you can wear your pajamas, go shopping from shop to shop. It's a great family-oriented activity, and it's kind of a tradition amongst the downtown shops. Lastly, on the back of your packet is some information. This is part of a series of information that we have had in this magazine called Leisure Group Travel. They came here... They came here last fall and sent some writers and did a three-page story about St. Genevieve. And then, you know, there's a little give-and-take there. We did some advertising. And they also did a program for us where they did a whole page about the things that group tours could see and experience here in the St. Genevieve area as a destination. So we're very pleased with the coverage that we've gotten and trying to continue to build those relationships whenever we can. There are no questions? Come and see us at the Welcome Center, and please help us spread the word about the activities coming up. Thank you.
Nick? Sandra jumped up in front of you, Matt. That's okay.
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the board, you've got my report in front of you there, my monthly operations report. In addition to my report, I have attached a list of unpaid fire tags for your review. I also have a report on our ISO audit attached. So if anybody has any questions before we get into fire tags in the ISO report on my operations report, I can answer them.
How does the fire tag rate set?
Some time back, it was a question of raising rates across the county and having them somewhat the same. Oh, Mayor, I don't know if you remember what date this was some time ago, but we came to a conclusion across the county that the rates would be what they are today. Now, since then, there are a couple of fire departments that have indicated that that even may be too low, and I think some of those have raised their rates. But it was a county-wide discussion with not only this board, but not... Oh, the private fire department boards. All approved the rates as they stand today.
So they are not currently the same in every district?
Mostly, they're the same across. I think there's two departments that might be somewhat different. Yeah.
And what would be the negative consequence of adjusting them upwards?
None that I can... None that I could break up. It was... Our rates were, at that time, lower than what the suggested rate would be. So this board agreed to come on board and just be the same as the rest of them. I think this board really sets the rates for fire tags in our jurisdiction, so, you know, any discussion on raising rates comes from you folks.
Didn't we, the last time we did it, didn't we add that other rate bracket in there for people that were still...
People within 1,000 feet or 1,500 feet of a hydrant, yes. Right. And that's only... That's only a few people. That only affects a few folks. And that was the ISO issue.
Because of the ISO. Because of our rating.
If they were in reach of a city municipal hydrant and we could pull hose from our truck to that particular structure, they could get the same rate as the ISO Class 4 that we currently have. So we charge those folks, I think it's double the current rate, the rate that the rest of the departments. Yes.
What happens if there's a fire at one of these properties? And, I mean, do you still respond or do they still get... No, I mean, how... What happens then?
Well, that's... The answer to that question is kind of a double-edged sword. Because those folks have not paid for their tag, they're not paying for services. There is a state statute that says if we decide to respond, that we can charge them the state... The rate that the state statute provides for. And don't quote me on this. I can get you the statute, but I think it's like $500 an hour. It's about... I think it's $100 an hour, every hour after that, so much for equipment. It's quite extensive, but it still does not... It's really not that hammer that you would like for folks to say, "Oh, my God, I'm going to pay my $50 fire tag so I don't have a fire" and get, you know, get socked with the state rate.
Well, I mean, do you primarily respond just in an effort to, I guess, to help the neighbors to keep their property? Or I don't want to say ignore the one that's on fire, but is it more of a protection mode or...
That's primarily if there's a life hazard involved, absolutely, we're responding.
But you said you're not... If you choose to respond, so you have the discretion of not...
We do. But how do you not respond to something like that? That's where... I'm trying to avoid answering your question for everybody to say, "Well, you know, they're going to come regardless, so we're going to pay the rate and take our chances," you know.
What I was getting at is educating the people that haven't paid that you're not obligated to respond, and maybe that'll get them to...
We... Well, we actually do that. We send out past-due notices. We send out then overdue notices that has the language in there of the state statute. So yes. And I think, I don't know, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, and Sue would know this, but do we even say in there that we have the discretion not to respond?
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure of that either. I'm sorry, I should have... But I... We find that information. I think some of the last discussion... I'm sorry, go ahead.
Who do you bill? The homeowner or the insurance company or both?
We bill the homeowner.
And if it's a lengthy fire, can you attach it to the... Their payoff?
I don't know. I'd have to refer that in the council. You're talking about someone who has not paid the tag?
Right.
Yeah. Because we do charge for... In addition to a tag, if we come to your home for a fire, we... There is a fee for our services. They're not as extensive as the state fees. I think the... I think that statute always also has a provision in it that if you don't pay those...
That many years they've never paid.
...that the city can put a lien on that property. Yes, sir?
Hey, Nick. Under unpaid fire tags, the last column says paid, all right? And you've got numbers, there's years there, like somebody paid in 2013, somebody hasn't paid since 2004?
That's possible. That's very possible.
You've got people sitting in 1995... 99.
That's possible.
So why are they even on this list if they're not going to, you know?
They're in our jurisdiction.
Are these the only people in the jurisdiction that haven't paid? I mean...
As of this date, yes.
Okay. So as you say here, there's four...
That we know of. Now, if there's someone out there that's slipped through the cracks or somebody that's obviously built something new or changed something, something sold, bought and sold, you know, we don't have a real good handle on...
Obviously, we know pretty good. Four of 46 paid and only 33 that don't have the tag. So that's...
So if someone hadn't paid since 1999, do they just pay for this year and they're forgiven for the rest of the year?
No.
Or they got to catch up?
If they come in, they have to pay a penalty, which is twice the fire tag. Yes.
Plus all the years they're behind?
Not... No, not plus. If you came in today and you were delinquent a couple of years, you'd pay $100 and you'd get a fire tag.
What if I buy one of these properties and, I mean, am I...
You're required to purchase that fire tag, yeah. You wouldn't be... You wouldn't be subject to the penalty, no.
Because, I mean... I mean, I don't mean to nitpick this, but like, there's one on here in particular that I know they don't go by that name anymore. Is this run by address or by name or...
You know, I don't know. Sue is the fire tag guru, so she's the one that sends out the list. Now, how we get those updates, I don't know. I don't know if there's a good way to get those updates. I don't know, Martin or Pam, you know?
It's problematic since we don't have building permits in the informal reorganizations of the county. We can't track new construction. They don't have any change of occupancy. Most people, you know, we can't get information from the electric cooperative. So it's very difficult for us to keep up to date on the ownerships.
Most people are proactive in when they buy insurance, their insurance company requires.
We've got one on there from 1999 that owes $50.
Well, so here's what we do. You know, we send out the notices, then we send you a past-due notice, and then we send you an overdue notice. And each of those notices has that indication in there of, you know, you haven't paid your fire tag. And if you have a fire and we choose to respond, we're going to kind of sock it to you with the state statute. to you with the state statute. So other than going out there and knocking on those folks' door, which is not my job, but, you know, I don't, I don't know, how do you, how do you get somebody to pay that tag?
I'm just curious, on the third notice, you don't send them certified or anything, where they got signed for them, where they got proof?
I don't, I don't know.
I mean, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I don't know that if we do that.
That might not be a bad idea, to send them certified, it costs a little bit more money, but then you do have some documentation that's...
You know, or the discussion we had some time ago was, this is like, you know, some people had an issue of with saying that, well, you might not respond to something. And the conversation there was, well, that's like having an automobile accident and then going by an insurance for your automobile. So it's kind of a double edged sword there. We're going to respond because if there's a, the potential for a life hazard there involved, and if they don't have a fire tag, then we're going to pick it up, bring it in the City Hall, and it'll probably end up with Frank.
But again, it's, I think it's pretty well, it's 70%, you know, of the total floods. We're doing pretty well.
I, I think we do, do fairly well, yes. You know, it is, it is unfortunate, there, this, this list tends to be remarkably the same year after year, I think.
Anything else? I mean, that would buy a lot of supplies, though, if you had all that.
My math says $2,000, if we collected everything.
Absolutely.
So, it'd be a lot of drain, too.
A chemical lime's on here, for $50.
And, uh...
That's what I was wondering, because they switched their name, they're not known by...
Yeah, they might, that, that could be true, too, yeah. They are now, La Jolla, yeah. So that might be one we might have.
If there's artificially low, I mean...
I'm sorry?
Their, their fee that they're paying, is that, I mean, they're paying just as much as...
There, again, that's something that we probably could look at, at Mississippi Lime. I know Mississippi Lime pays, actually, it shouldn't be a 50, oh, you know what this may be. This may be one of the homes they own, because it's a $50 tag. I'm guessing that one is.
Would the board be amenable to a work session to discuss fire tags and fees and adjustments and that kind of thing?
If there's no way to put that on a, on a county, I mean, they already collect our city taxes for us, couldn't they?
I think that's the subject matter of the work session. It's really, there are lots of permutations and ways you can go, and things we could do, and I think if the fire chief could attend, and the city attorney, we'd have a productive session on what our options are.
I mean, that's a low number, but it's still...
Well, it's still money.
It's still, it's still money.
As I, as I've indicated before, we have eight, just in the vehicles we have. The operating budget for the fire department comes out of general revenue, but the vehicles that we've purchased in the past, five of the eight vehicles we've purchased from a rural fire plant, so it's, it's a viable part of our, our expenses and budget.
Anything else? Can you ask him? Sure.
Can I, can I, Mr. Swett?
Yes, sir.
Will you sort of give me a, you made a statement, and I couldn't quite understand, about the city could put a lien on the property. You have a five mile city limit access in the county.
Basically.
That you could get fire tags from, but if a person does not desire to have a fire tag, how could the city put a lien on his property?
Okay, that, that's, that's not what I said. Okay, hang on, I'll explain that.
Boy, do you say that.
Okay, if you or that person in the county, and you own the property, okay?
Right.
You have a fire.
Right.
You don't have a fire tag.
Right.
If we come out and put your fire out, which we can choose to do...
Right.
Unless you write me a letter that says, "Don't get on my property." That's in the state statute, too. So if you don't, if you want your stuff to burn down, you don't...
I understand, and I'd carry the gate with a chopper.
That would work, too.
Right.
Okay? But if we choose to put your fire out, then there is a state statute that says that I can charge you fees and sums for us providing you that service, even though you did not pay your fire tag. Now, if you refuse to pay that bill, then the city can put a lien on your property, yes.
I'd like to ask the attorney if that's a fact.
I'd be happy to issue a written opinion on that.
But what if you got your land posted?
If it, if you post it that says, "Do not put my fire out," we're not going to put your fire.
Right. I mean, we got that for us.
Okay.
But don't buy, and the city coming out there and putting a lien on your property.
If we provide you a service...
Like I say...
And you do not pay for that service, the state statute says that we can put a lien on your property.
I think by the fact that the person don't take out a fire tag, he's telling you something.
No, that's not, that's not true.
It's not?
You have, the state statute says you have to write me a letter that says you don't want me to put your fire out.
All right, you committed everybody now to writing you a letter.
Absolutely, that's correct.
So we're dealing on the spot.
That's absolutely correct.
All right, thank you for your answer.
You're very welcome.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks. We can, I'm sure we can get you a copy of that, that statute. Anything else for Mr. Swett?
Going through the ISO, I want to do the ISO report.
Sure. Okay, attached to, oh, by the way, I amended my last page of my report, did everybody get that?
Yeah.
I needed to add some building code, stuff on there, so you can just take my previous last, not this one, but the last page of my report, the one that's highlighted, just swap that out for my last page. Okay, we had the, the ISO audit was conducted 9:00 AM, June 17th, at the Fire Department and Training Facility. Representatives there were James Alsop from the ISO, myself, Ken Steiger, my assistant chief, and Steve Wilson, and I'm sorry, the other gentleman that attended with you?
Mike Thomas.
Mike Thomas, with the Water Department. So the post-survey process, which is the attachment to my report, that says ISO protect, protection survey, post-survey information, that was given to us by the ISO agent, okay? The field survey that was done will be sent to the Regional Processing Center for processing and review. Within six months, the ISO Regional Process Center will send out a survey, a survey results letter to community officials, myself, Mayor, City Administrator. About that time, shortly after that, the ISO Home Office will send out a grading survey evaluation to community officials. This is when your ISO rating is, is released to the insurance companies as well. So as the report, as the audit goes, 10% of the total points is your 911 system handling and reporting calls, 40% is your credit for your water system, and 50% is your fire department credit. So since our previous audit in '07, the ISO folks have been revising their process, making it somewhat user friendly. In the time that they were doing that, they sent out their field reps, their field auditing folks, and they got a chance to go into all of the 911 systems across the country. So they already had a good handle on what our 911 system was, or is today, our Joint Communication Center over in St. Francis County. And we got, from what I understand, we got very good credit with, with them, all the, we got all the credit that they had coming to them, and we, specifically for us, we were given credit for using what we call the Active 911 System, which is a backup redundant notification system. This is a system whenever we're toned out for a call from the 911 CAD system, we, we also get a notification on our cell phones now. So it's a backup system. All of you remember when the, when the transformer blew up, when was that, Buck? Out on M Road? And the whole town went down?
It was like a winter.
Yeah, it was, it was in the wintertime, yeah. So our 911 system went down with that, and we were notified through the Active 911 system that that was happening and to respond to that call. So that backup system's quite, seems to be working quite well. Water system credit, and this first bullet point is the same on the fire department, total water system credit will not be known until the ISO Process Center completes their evaluation. It was noted that ISO, this is one of those things that I'm saying, that ISO is kind of revamping their system, and they're taking points and putting them in a little bit different form or fashion than they, than they had in the past. It was noted that the ISO attributes 30 points of the total water system points to the annual water flow testing, hydrant, annual hydrant flushing, and annual hydrant maintenance. So, and I give Steve and his guys good credit for that, because they, they have that information available, they do that, they're going to supply that to the, to the ISO representative if we haven't done so already. And they're probably going to get high marks for that. So just in my perspective, if we're ever looking to cut funding of the guy that goes out and opens hydrants and flushes them, and cutting back on, on that type of work, the hydrant maintenance, that now holds significant points towards your, towards your ISO, towards your ISO points. So that annual testing that they're doing, annual flow testing that they're doing, is quite significant for the water system points. And just credit Steve and the guys, I think they're doing, they're doing a good job with that. I think we got all the points that we're looking there. So, again, an opinion for me at the bottom there is that, that I think we should score as well as we did in 2007 when we obtained our Class 4. So regarding fire department credit, again, the fire department, total fire department credit will not be known until the ISO Process Center completes their evaluation. This was what I added, and again, this is another, this, this had not been in there previously for fire department credit. They're going to be looking at the near future, significant points for what building code we currently have, and I think they're, they're giving credit for whatever the current status of building codes is across the nation, that, that addition, you might say. I think we are, we currently have the next addition, so we're just one off of whatever the current national standard is, and you get very little points for additions other than that. So when we talk about billing codes, and when you all talk about billing codes in the future, it's very important to keep upgrading to that, that next standard, that the national codes, when they're revised, the revised standards. They're also going to give significant points to the billing inspection, to the billing inspections, and billing inspector certifications and continuing education. They would like every commercial building in town inspected every year. That would be their recommendation. They don't, they're not in the business of telling us what to do, but if there's a percentage of that that we do, we, obviously, will get credit for that. Billing inspector certifications, so I think we're looking to replace a billing inspector currently. We might want to make sure that there is a certification that comes with that person, and that they upkeep, or keep that certification upgraded with, you know, whatever those recommendations are. I don't, I don't specifically know what they are, but I know that there's a certification, I know there's an upgraded, upgraded process to keep them current. So keeping our billing, code enforcement people certified and educated is, is going to be very important. Again, it's my opinion that the fire department scored as well as it did in 2007, when we obtained our Class 4 rating, excluding the ladder truck issue. Now, conversations with the, the auditor, Mr. Alsop, he indicated that it is not the responsibility of IS, the ISO representative to tell the city what they should purchase or not purchase in the way of equipment and apparatus. That being said, according to ISO published criteria, the city of St. Genevieve does meet the criteria for a ladder in two categories, for a ladder truck in two categories. Having, in, in that criteria is having five or more billings with the needed fire flow of over 3,500 gallons per minute, and, and these are billings like Sylvanus, Eric Scott, National Vinyl, St. Jen and Valley Schools, Catholic Church, Lutheran Church, St. Jen Industries, and probably a whole lot more of those type of billings that, that you and I, that all of us can think of. The other criteria is having five or more billings, three stories or above. And I think in, in previous grant applications, I think we had identified over 22 structures within the city that meet that criteria. So, just the ladder truck question, will the city lose a Class 4 rating if it doesn't replace the ladder truck? And that answer is yes. If we do not replace that apparatus, we're going to lose our Class 4 rating. Will the city retain the Class 4 rating if we replace it with a ladder truck? That answer is yes. The reason that answer is yes is because in the ISO rating, we fall about dead even between a five, between a four and a five rating. So there's enough points associated with a ladder that puts us in there that will easily obtain that Class 4. So the other question is, will the city retain the Class 4 rating if we replace the ladder truck with a pumper truck? And again, this is unknown. The ISO representative could not tell us, because he had, was, he is not charged with the calculation of points. Previously, the points for just replacing the ladder truck with a pumper truck were not quite, the, the, the points for a Class 4 is between 60 and 69.99. And I think the calculation we made in the past was that with a pumper truck in place, we would be like a 59.6 something, which is one of those old adages of close but no cigar, it's still a five. So can I tell you today, or can anybody tell you today that we can do that with a pumper truck? I don't know the answer to that. So with that, I can answer any other questions, hopefully. The, the last page, again, is what the ISO auditor left us... The last page again is what the ISO auditor left us. And I think the thing that I was, struck me the most is that it's going to take them six months to get us any numbers.
Any other questions?
That's the only thing I got a problem with is the six months, this day and age with the computers. He should have been able to punch everything in a computer and pretty well spit it out.
Evidently not.
I just want to back up a little bit. When you were talking about the 911 thing and power outages and all that, what's the current 911, or the current, the old 911 building? Does that play into anything? Is it still usable if we need it?
It is still usable. There is the opportunity to dispatch if we have things go down. It has that capability. I'm not really familiar with that. You know Felix Maher, he would be your guy to answer that question, or call Allen Wells directly.
So there's no?
I guess.
There's no personnel?
Or no protocols to follow if?
There may be.
If the 911 system over there went down?
Well, I'm saying there may be, yeah. I don't, but I don't know that. I'm sorry.
Does that play into any of that?
It possibly does, yeah.
How often do you get an ISO audit? Every year, every five years?
ISO is their, their wish is to do one every three years now. It used to be that you could get an ISO audit and then you may not see them for five years or 10 years if nothing significant has changed with your department. But now this gentleman came down, I think he spent three or four hours with us, and he was gone. The last audit took two and a half days in 2007. I mean, they looked at every, turned over every leaf and looked at everything. We went out and tested hydrants with the water system to prove their numbers. And now if Steve can send them numbers and said, hey, we did our annual flushing of hydrants, we looked at every hydrant, we opened them up, we cranked them up, we greased, we oiled them, he did flow tests in certain areas of the city, they're looking at that information and saying, hey, that's good for us. You know, if we come in and find, ever find something different, you're probably going to suffer for it. But I think a city, you know, is responsible to keep that, those systems up.
All right, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Pinkley.
How y'all doing? As you see on my report, we've been mowing and patching, mowing and patching, mowing and patching, yeah.
Where you patching it now?
Well, in the real thin spots, we're using hole mix. And on the real big holes, we're using our concrete.
Just like you pretty much were before.
David, why are we still using cold patch this time of year?
Because a lot of the holes that we have are real thin and the aggregate in the hot mix is too big and it'll make it rough. We're trying to make them as smooth as possible. Some people ride scooters around and stuff and it's kind of rough on them.
What's the update on Ford's story?
July, the week of July 7th, they said. I asked what day and they said they were going to call me and let me know, so I haven't got the call yet. You know, with all this rain and everything, they've been calling for it. We get it sometimes, sometimes we don't. They want to make sure.
I guess they're going to fully inspect it before they do it?
The guy's going to come down, this Jason guy, I don't remember that guy, but anyway, he's going to come down and go through with me. So we're going to make sure we get it swept real good and, you know, I kind of hope it doesn't, you know, rain a couple of days before that, kind of wash it off. So that way there's no excuse this time.
Well, Dave there, this is not related to his work, but John Stupi had brought up problems with the 10th Street railroad crossing. And we've had a couple of citizens complain about what appears to be some saddling on the tracks at 4th Street.
There is.
And we're calling all the numbers we had for track maintenance people and not getting any returns. There was a guy in town today changing out light bulbs. So unbeknownst to me, Eric had asked him when he was down at 10th Street about who to call. And I asked him while we were here about who to call. And he gave us the name. And when I was at the Mississippi Lime Citizen Advisory Panel meeting, I asked them who they dealt with on track maintenance. And they gave me the name of the guy that's supposedly responsible for this area. All of those calls have been made and we just have to wait for a response. You don't get a person, everybody goes to voicemail.
Dave, can you look at the South Gabberay Creek there, Mrs. I and D. Nicholson's? There's a tree across to the, it's on one side of her bridge.
Okay.
I looked at the other day, I don't know how long it even gets down to this bridge because it's just a trickle, but you can see it moving, but.
Can I check her out?
Thank you, Dave.
Anything else, Dave? Okay, thank you, Dave.
Thanks, David.
Good evening.
Evening.
I know you guys got my report. One thing I'd like to address on the air that probably could have released it another way, but the passing of Officer Fisher on Tuesday. As many of you know, he fought a long battle with renal cancer and lost that on Tuesday. Funeral services, which I didn't have at the time of this report, will be Monday at 10 o'clock at the Chapel Hill Mortuary in Cedar Hill. And then the visitation will be Sunday night from 2:00 to 8:00. We're going to try to have a decent showing there and show our support there. Again, he passed on Tuesday and I knew the report was going out Tuesday evening, so I hope that's sufficient notification. Other than that, generator's still going on, trying to schedule a time that will work out for everybody that we can experience a momentary power outage for the installation of that. And I don't believe there's anything else real significant on there. Unless you guys have any questions.
Looks good.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Anything on the reports from the board?
No, other than Joe and I went up to Columbia there. It was very interesting. There was one lady that couldn't answer questions, but other than that, the other five or six there, they were very knowledgeable, asked a lot of questions from the crowd, and it was, I got a lot out of it, so.
Those are real good conferences to go to. As you say, they give you a lot of information, that's no doubt. Okay, minutes from the regular meeting July the 9th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, minutes from the meeting of June the 18th.
Move through.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? And kind of the special, or the call session for June the 18th. Did we give a table? So, should I say table? Oh, okay, couch, two tables. All right, all right, both of them, okay.
Move through.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Okay, the treasurer's report for May.
Move to approve.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, resolution 2014-23, a resolution reappointing Kathleen Walts to the St. Genevieve Planning and Zoning Commission.
Motion approved.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Resolution 2014-24, a resolution reappointing Mark Buckeye to the St. Genevieve Parks Recreation Board.
Move to approve.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Old Business, Bill Number 3976, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an easement agreement between the city of St. Genevieve and Charter Communications Entertainment, One LLC and Charter Communications.
Move through.
Second.
I'd like to point out that we'll update the dates to reflect the decision tonight. Pam, column is spelling, it'll also be corrected.
Roll call.
Alderman Codwell, yes. Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill Number 3976 now becomes ordinance 3918.
Okay, thank you. New Business, Bill Number 3978, first reading.
An ordinance approving a bid proposal from Davis Farm Supply, Perryville, Missouri for the purchase of a Kubota O3800 compact tractor in an amount, I take C, $26,715.
Motion approved.
Second.
Do I have a second? Okay. Okay, discussion? Anybody? This is the one they talked about a couple meetings ago.
Yeah.
Yes.
They got the bid.
Yep, factored out, right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Move for a second reading.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, second reading of Bill Number 3978?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, second reading, Bill Number 3978.
An ordinance approving a bid proposal from Davis Farm Supply, Perryville, Missouri for the purchase of a Kubota O3800 compact tractor in an amount, I take C, $26,715.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Codwell.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill Number 3978 now becomes ordinance 3919.
These two have to be the same words. Public comments. Anybody like to address the board? Yes, sir.
My name is Bill Fisher. I've been down here a year, a couple of months ago on the same issue on the new tax. You're concerned a new tax for this new fire truck. Seventy percent of the people that voted overwhelmingly said no new tax. With that being said, that tells me no tax as well as no new truck. And they're not concerned about it, they're content where they're at. And as far as this ISO rating that the chief of the fire department talks about, I called my insurance company out of Perryville and they said a little bit of it is concerned with the rate of what I pay in tax, pay in insurance, but not all of it. So with that being said, the ISO rating that he keeps talking about, I don't believe for a second. It might be 1% out of the whole, 900% of the whole tax, or the whole insurance cost. So I would advise the board, I asked the board like I did last time, vote no overwhelmingly. The fire department spent all their money on the, the bare new firehouse. So if I remember right, it will not be paid for until 2025 or 2035. I don't remember which one it was. But until then, until I say ask some other source of revenue for it, we just don't get it. And that's the way I see it, so, thank you.
My name is Robert Brown, I live on Merchant Street. I'm there in that yellow house. But my fears has now come true. I talked to Mr. Toma earlier, and the Alderman, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. We got now methamphetamine manufacturers buying the house. There are no meth people. And now we're going to have meth people in the neighborhood. Mr. Toma goes, oh, we're going to give them a year, tear it down. Do you realize how much meth and people are going to make in a year's time in that house? While they're, oh, we're going to fix a little bit of this and a little bit of that, they're going to be hiding in plain sight. I'm telling you guys, everybody here, you guys might think you know what meth does people, but you don't. I have, my oldest son's got his whole face blown off over it. I had a nephew that was born with no eyes and his heart was out of him because of meth. The people, you guys got to do something there. The chief will not do a damn thing. The, just like, please don't interrupt me, please. I'm not being disrespectful. Like the kids that was terrorizing the neighborhood, quote, the chief told me, those are his boys and he'll protect them. What else is he protecting in this town? This has to stop. Mr. Toma, I feel sorry for you, you're caught in the middle. You cannot give these people a year. They will destroy Merchant Street. I'm telling you. And you guys got to come up with something. There's a school right down the street. We can't do this again. We cannot let these people buy it for $1,000. They came out there at, I think it was 11 o'clock at night, scared the hell out of Mrs. Miller. And the cops let them go knowing that one of the guys, there was something wrong with either his license or his tags on his bike. And the cop, and this was heard, the cop told them, we're going to turn around and go this way, you go that way so we don't see your bad license. What's going on? I mean, you go, and you're, these are known meth people, it's public record, known meth people. And Mr. Toma says, well, they got a year to tear it down. No, they got a year to destroy this town. And you guys think I come here and ramble on? I don't. I'm telling you guys, but some of you just don't want to hear it. And one other thing I'd like to address to you, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you might never heard of the Constitution. This was sent to me, I got it yesterday, from the American Center for Law and Justice. This is for you, Mr. Mayor. The mayor, your First Amendment right has been denied by the mayor. He had no right to stifle you. He had the right not to respond to you, but he had no right to let you not speak in a public meeting. And then another comment, same to the Alderman, I'm not going to comment what you said about the chief, because I'm going to let my attorney deal with him. But I'm telling you, there's something going on in this town, it's a lot bigger than what you guys know. There might be a couple of you know. And I'm still waiting, you can come by my house tonight and I'll talk to you. Now, please, there's... Now, please, there's something, there's something you guys can do here to say, "No more, we're not gonna let a new guy come in and give him a year." I mean, they can make a lot of meth in a year and destroy a lot of lives, and please do something here, please. Thank you.
I just made a very short comment because I don't know that it's worth commenting, that certainly there's nobody sitting here on this table or nobody employed by this city that would condone or anybody coming in and making meth. It makes it sound like, you make it sound like we're gonna give them a permit to manufacture meth. That's completely ridiculous, and you don't know the whole story as far as what is happening with that house. So, we'll just leave, that's the only comment I'm gonna say.
I'm not saying you're giving them permission to make, but you're, you're condoning it, you're letting...
No, we're not doing any of that, and you don't know the whole story, so we're just gonna leave. That's the only comment I'm gonna make.
Can, can I just, a couple of items? Real quickly, a, a comment that I made to Mr. Brownie was that I had an obligation to protect the citizens of the, of the city, juveniles included, um, and I, and I stand by that, I mean, that's what you guys paying me to do. And specifically with the, the people that were going through the House, one of the gentlemen told my officer, I think I have a warrant out of St. Francis County, my officer detained him, ran him through the mule system, and, and there was no warrant found, and he released him because he had no reason to arrest him. So, just to clear up a couple of those, uh, things that were, that were made, or the comments that were made. Thank you.
May I just point to that one he made?
No.
Oh, yes, you're, you cannot deny me my rights, sir. He told me that...
You, you, we've already heard from you.
He told me that he, those are his boys, and he'll protect them.
Sit down. Yes, Mr. Weiner.
Mayor, City Minister, members of the board, my name is Carl Weiner, I live at 1158 Valley Spring Trails. I, uh, sit over there and listen to Mr. Swin. Now, don't get me wrong, I think he's a very good fire chief, he has good things about him, but he has some bad things about him. I'd like to, uh, I was at the committee meeting, the last meeting you had, when he got up and said, uh, you had, he had a, we had a good fire department. We had a good police department. I do say we do have a good police department. I rate it 9.9 out of 10. Can't give you 10. You have a good street department. Got a lot of ruts. You got a good water department, I give him credit for that. He said, "With all these things, and an ISO rating of four, and if it goes to five or six, and a business comes into town, what are they gonna say when you have all these good things, but you have a poor ISO rating?" We had an ISO rating for I don't know how many years. We had a property out there, industrial property, almost 20 years, and you can't tell me one time when you had anybody would come in there and put a business in. So why does he worry about all the good things we have, but a poor ISO rating? I don't buy that. If a business place is gonna come in, he's gonna come in. Now, enough on that. I made a comment at that committee meeting, the, uh, regular meeting, that Mr. Toma said that there was, uh, the Valley Spring TIF was gonna expire or come out of play, and there'd be $70,000 approximately that could be used for a fire truck. Now, before you look at one another on this, hear me out. The statement I made was, one that was presented at a committee meeting, and it wasn't, the statement I made wasn't that we was gonna use TIF money to do it, but when this TIF expired, that money that was gonna generate would go into the general revenue. And you can use the general revenue to buy a fire truck. I didn't say the TIF was gonna buy it, which you misunderstood. I have here also, it says, "The point-based business TIF will end in December 2015, and estimated under $235,000 in city property and sales taxes will become available, and $120,000 of that will end up in the general revenue. You can use that money too." Now, with that, I'll thank you for your time, and do some thinking on this. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
I guess, I gotta ask, what is the difference between the point-based TIF and the Valley Springs TIF?
It's really the, it's really the same thing, it's different, there's different, there's three different areas that different taxes come out of, and when it's calculated, and it's, it's...
Both generate different revenue.
Correct. And you were probably misunderstood at the last meeting when you did say, you, you probably were misunderstood at the last meeting when you did say, "Take the TIF money and use, use it to buy the fire truck." I completely understand what you're talking about. Absolutely, I think we did talk about that in some of the meetings, that the TIF was going to expire in 2015, and there would be money in the general revenue, but I think, and I think I even brought that up at one of our meetings, that I think my comment was that a lot of people had their hands out, meaning a lot of our departments already had our hands out. One probably being that we needed the biggest, to biggest, uh, to address was the, the street issue, is where I would've thought most of that money would be going to, but it would be up to this board to how they wanna spend that money, absolutely.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, other business. Approval of a temporary liquor license for the St. Genevieve United Club for the Juror de Fete August 9th and 10th, 2014.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, approval of a temporary liquor license for the St. Genevieve Blinds Club for the Juror de Fete August 9th and 10th. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Can we do all of them at once, Mayor? Okay, the next two are the same? Yeah, I know.
Why, why are we, why are there two different temporary?
Mr. Hoffman?
Yeah. You ready to have me go forward?
Yes, um, we got approval, I guess we just need clarification on which way we need to word it. These two are the same?
Well, they're, they're different responsible organizations, but it's for the same activity.
Yeah. Okay.
And Bill will kinda explain it to you.
Okay.
Well, what my idea was, was I was gonna do, me and my wife as individuals was going to do this and put all the money into, uh, American Cancer Society, or American Cancer Society and Susan G. Coleman, which, I mean, I'm not a not-for-profit organization or anything, but, you know, I can show evidence of having done this after the fact, which, I don't know if that's good enough for you guys or not, that's all I can do. Uh, if that isn't gonna work that way, Scott Beckman has agreed to sponsor, sponsor us to, uh, do it under their organization. And that's basically what we wanna do, is just the money that we collect, we all go to one or both of those cancer organizations. We've had a lot of cancer deaths in our family, and a lot of my friends passed from cancer and have cancer now, and I just feel like it's, I've gotta give back something to somebody, but I mean, life's been good to me, I can't complain, and I'd, I'd just like to help people out, and that's what I had in mind, I mean, I, something just went through my brain about a month ago and thought I'd try it. Now it's up to you guys.
Can we approve both in the case that something changes between now and then, and one party can or can't, or something changes with the organizations?
One of the reasons why we, we usually require that a not-for-profit be applying for this is that by law, a not-for-profit cannot, uh, spend any of the money on its members or itself. So, uh, even though Mr. Hoffman is, uh, of good reputation and, and his word is, has always been good, by, by using the not-for-profit as a sponsor, you've got state law also preventing that money from going anywhere but to a charity. Uh, if, if it's all the same, I would recommend that you, you issue it to the not-for-profit, uh, with Mr. Hoffman probably being the chairman of the project, and I think you're talking about conducting it on your property.
Right.
And I think, I talked to Mr. Hoffman, they, they're looking at getting, the, the not-for-profit is looking at getting insurance for, uh, alcohol consumption on your private property.
Yeah, I have to get the insurance through, if we're approved through Classic Cruisers, like, I would get the insurance, well, either way, I'm gonna get the insurance.
It'll come out, that, that cost of insurance will come out of the proceeds, but traditionally we, we use organized not-for-profits for this kind of an event. And, and the reason is by law that they cannot, you know, they can be audited by the state, the LLC can't, I'm sorry, the, uh, not-for-profit can't, and it gives a little protection to the taxpayers and to you folks.
Do you, does it make you any difference?
Well, I, I'd prefer to do it me and my wife as individuals, but it doesn't really matter, I mean, if I was given the choice, that's the choice I would've done. I really don't wanna burden the Classic Cruisers with any kind of other responsibilities or anything, but if that's the way it's gotta be done, it's fine, I mean, Scott Beckman and I have talked about it.
From, from the same point of the city, the city's better off if you use a not-for-profit. If you were gonna raise money, not selling alcohol, but any other, any other money raiser, and then you turn that over to these organizations, you'd be, you wouldn't need the city. It's just the sale of alcohol. Traditionally, and I, I think the, the victim license thing talks about an organization that's gonna, that has a charitable purpose. So you don't have to be a not-for-profit corporation, you can be a not-for-profit club or organization.
Well, if I, if we do it through the fire club, the, the money that's donated, is it don't, would it be donated in their name then, or is they're just, they're just sponsoring me, it would be donated through...
Well, I don't see why they couldn't make the donation in memory of your family, and come from them, it, it would really work the same way. Now, you won't be able to take a tax donation for...
I ain't worried about that. I got enough of them already.
Yeah. But you had more income than them.
Yeah.
But it's the alcohol sale that I, I have concern about, that you make sure that you can document that you're dealing with a charitable organization, and I, I believe Mr. Hoffman it contributes to charity, but I don't think you are a charitable organization.
No. I'd kinda had visions somewhere along the line of, not now, but someday in the future, I would like to just have fun, maybe other fundraisers other than this, see, just see how this goes first, but I'd like to do it in honor of my children's mother who died from breast cancer. That's why I was kinda worried about who's actually gonna be donating this money, 'cause I want it really to be kinda in her honor.
Well, the way these things work, you and your wife are probably gonna put out most of the labor for the...
And my kids.
And your kids, for the club, and you put up a sign that says that this, where the money's gonna go, uh, if the Classic Cruisers agree with that, uh, I think you can accomplish a very worthy goal and still fall within the definition of a charitable organization.
So the fact that they're listed as an LLC has no bearing?
Well, it's, it's an LLC is a for-profit.
Well, that's true.
So I'm recommending that you issue the permit to Classic Cruisers Car Club, and that Mr. Hoffman work with them and make sure that the donation is made in the name of your family.
It's good enough for me.
Move to approve the permit for Classic Cruisers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, then we have approval of a temporary...
Thank you, Bill.
Liquor license for the St. Genevieve Blinds Club for backstoppers to be held on September 27th through 28th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Do we need to deny this one then officially, or...
Why?
Since it's on, I mean, it's on, listed separately on the agenda, isn't it, or...
Yeah.
Do we need to have a vote to deny that, or...
Okay, let's, you need to vote on this one.
Okay.
We got a motion and a second.
All in favor of the backstoppers for Lions Club?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then, uh, go back to that one, approval of the temporary liquor license for Terry Hoffman LLC, uh, for 93 South Gaberree for the Juror de Fete, August 9th and 10th. Motion to deny?
Let, let me suggest just a wording that might be more appropriate, is just say that you are, uh, you're tabling it because there has been, already been a permit issued for that event.
Well, our understanding from what we learned at the MML thing is you can't table anything unless it's gonna be discussed later in the meeting. Tabling leaves it on the table.
Yeah, I, I, there's, there's a disagreement on that issue.
So you would have to have a motion to suspend.
Well, there's disagreement on that issue, but you have the power to do that as an alderman in your city.
So tabling is...
Is okay.
Okay.
Roberts Rules of Order technically says that there is no such thing as tabling, but your rules of procedure would allow you to vary the Roberts Rule to do it. We've done it for so many years that that's how you folks normally handle your, your business.
So tabling it isn't gonna make it come up again? I mean, shouldn't we just...
Not unless, not unless something happens to this other application. Let's say Classic Cruisers say, "Well, you know, we, we really don't wanna do this," and we can try to bring it back, try to figure out a way that he could, uh, qualify as a charitable organization.
And then I think Alderman Prince, if he tables, if he's gotta bring it back, correct?
Somebody that voted for tabling is, would be someone who would bring it back, yes.
I thought it's the one that brought it up, I think.
If you voted in favor of tabling, if you voted in favor of the tabling, you can bring it back.
Well, I mean, either way, if, if something happens to the other one, they have to resubmit again anyways, so...
If you table it, you still got it in your file.
Gotcha, okay, my motion to table?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And lastly, approval of a request from Riverview at the Park to conduct their annual fireworks display on July the 2nd.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, uh, oh, one more here. St. Genevieve Chamber of Commerce requesting a street closure on Third Street between Merchant and Market Street for the Fourth of July celebration, reading of the Declaration of Independence on July 4th from, uh, 11:30 to 1:00 PM.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And, uh, we would like to, I'd like a motion to go into closed session to discuss, discuss real estate?
I'll make the motion go into closed session.
Second.
Channel 7 and 98 TV and web broadcasting are made possible through contributions and donations from viewers like you. Thank you for your support.